Carroll County Schools, Matt Wyndham from the Carroll County Water Authority, and Donna Lackey from Carroll Tomorrow. We did have several meetings to review where the plan needed to go. We had three public hearings. We had a meeting with the farmers, the ag group. We did a survey online, got some really good feedback from the public. So now we're ready for you all to approve for us to submit it. Just a few highlights. I've handed you all a copy of the future land use plan. That's probably the most significant change in the plan. As you all know, we didn't have a whole lot of growth after the previous plan was adopted because of the downturn in '08. And so some of the changes in the future land use is that we took out the character areas, we took out the urban growth areas. Those urban growth areas that were formerly a gold color around the cities are now yellow for residential. We also added an airport buffer for industrial. We added some industrial along the 27th corridor. And those were the main changes that we made in the future land use plan. We did hear back from the public that most people wanted to keep the county agriculture. There was a really significant number of people who responded that they wanted to keep the county green and ag. Just a little bit about the population projections. We did get some numbers from the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget. We got some numbers from Atlanta Regional Commission. We kind of came up with a happy medium of those. We're projecting by 2020, the population will be somewhere around 126,000. Currently this year, census estimates that the population of Carroll County is at 116, 116,000. So we're looking at adding another probably 10,000 people by 2020. 2030, we're looking at probably about 145,000. 2040, about 165. We're thinking we're going to have slow growth in the county, and we're hoping that's what it will be. Slow growth is easier to manage. So those were pretty much the highlights of the plan. I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you all have. The plan is out on the website. I have printed copies in my office. You're welcome to look at. Any questions?
You've done a great job. I attended one. I appreciate Michelle Serbin. Wish we had more community input. There was not, I know the weather wasn't great that one night, but we didn't have a lot of community input.
Right.
But I think because of a lot of past we've had in the last few years has probably stemmed what we're going to look like for the next 10.
Right, right.
So that might have been some of it, but yeah. Appreciate the work. That's all, that's a lot, lot into that.
Thank you. And I do have to give some kudos to Amy Goldsby from Emergency Management and Peter DeBick.
And Peter.
G.I.S. for doing the math, so.
Absolutely.
You know, I thought Gone With the Wind was the largest book I've ever read, but I do believe the comp plan beats that. And I know y'all have read it several times over, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Amy, thank you. Yeah. All right, any questions? All right. Danny, thank you very much for your work there. We'll skip item number three. Commissioner Anderson's not here yet. We'll move to item number four, panhandling in general. Call on Commissioner Tommy Lee.
Chairman and fellow commissioners, at this time, we're going to pull this, and we're gathering more information. We will try to bring it back later.
All right.
So we're trying to gather more information on this.
And that is so documented there. Thank you, Commissioner Lee. All right, we'll go to item number five, funding for West Georgia Regional Library. We'll call on Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, Commissioners, as you recall, I withdrew the M.O.C. for the regional library system back in June because I felt I needed more time to research the financial need. By using the formula that the West Georgia Regional Library System has applied to our county funds has resulted in possible closing or even reducing hours for Whitesburg and possibly Mount Zion from the draft budget I've seen. As you all know, this won't just hurt the citizens of those two areas. It will hurt all of Carroll County citizens because those students, those citizens will have to find another library to go to, therefore using the resources at our other, our other locations. And of course, we all know education is so important, and making sure that students who don't have access to broadband does have access is what our, our local libraries do provide. So I'm bringing back a, another M.O.U. It is for a lesser amount, and it does have more parameters built into it. So I'm asking that you support this one-time gift, one-time gift, to keep all six libraries operating at the highest level this year, which will also allow us over the next several months, and I say us, I mean the Board of Commissioners, to really understand and learn our service agreements and to continue to explore other funding formulas of how we, the Board of Commissioners, wants to spend our $250,000. So I'm asking to sign, to approve this M.O.U. to give us more time.
Any questions about the M.O.U. for Commissioner Morgan or County Attorney?
Oh, I guess. Why don't you, Stacy? I'm not going to read it, but...
Thank you, Commissioners. This M.O.U. that we're handing out is an M.O.U. between the county and the West Georgia Regional Library System, and it provides, like Commissioner Morgan said, for a one-time payment for $41,000 to be used solely for capital outlay purposes. And that would be for the, for books, whether printed, electronic, or audio, DVDs, and other materials that would qualify as a capital outlay expense. And it would be used during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. We have that to be paid in quarterly installments. The first one, September 1, then December 1, March 1, and June 1. And there's no further obligation to make any payments beyond this. That doesn't apply to the 250 that was already approved in your budget. The Section 2 provides that the library system would provide all audited annual financial statements, any financial reports that they give to their trustees, the annual budget and any amendments, and any other financial information reasonably requested by the county. Section 3 is a representation by the library system that they believe that they have the financial support based on commitments from other funding agencies that would be sufficient so that all of the county's library facilities would remain open and the operating hours would not be reduced during the upcoming fiscal year. And they would agree not to close those facilities or reduce the hours. If they did, then the county would not be required to make any further payments under this agreement. And that's, that's, the rest of it's pretty much boilerplate. Do you have any questions?
What is, you say it's a one-time deal. What's going to change in the next year that they don't come back next year, won't us fund the library?
I don't know.
Well, I think, Tommy, that when we can explore better, the, we'll have more information on the expenses of our libraries because a lot of the numbers are still kind of unknown. And the second thing is that we can explore other formulas that might keep them all open. But there again, you're right, we may be in the same boat next year in our cities, or our Friends Group will have to step up.
Why are we assuming that responsibility when the library has a board of its own to work these problems? Why are we assuming those problems? We give our 250,000.
Because the way they allocated it this year is, in my opinion, hurting two of our libraries. If Lehman and I and Gerald have worked on other formulas, we can't change the formula now because it would make all the cities and their libraries have to go back and redo their budgets. If we had had more opportunity to understand and do it, I think another formula wouldn't put us in this situation. But yes, you're right, come next July 1st, this is it. And if the cities and hopefully Friends Group can't come up with the funding, then we may have to reduce hours.
Any other questions from the Board discussion? Stacy, thank you. Commissioner Morgan, thank you. This time, item number six, we'll call on Lehman Stevens, Finance Director, to discuss the millage rate 2018.
Thank you. We received the information from the Tax Commissioner on July 11 on the guidance, and I computed the tax that we would receive if we use the current millage rate, and that would be $21,515,325. And our budget is $20,825,000. So we would actually, if we did not roll back the millage rate, help 690,000 more than what we did when we prepared the budget. But based on history and this year, the TSPLOs, I computed the rollback rate, and if we do the rollback rate based on what the Tax Commissioner and Tax Assessor sent to me, the tax generated would be $21,103,828, which again would be 278,000 more than we have today. But when I reviewed the numbers, I had some question about the reassessment of existing property, which some people would refer to as inflationary growth. And those numbers looked really high to me this year, so I talked with the Commissioner, Tax Commissioner, and I also contacted Greg Rees, who wrote the wind gap program that the Tax Assessor's Office used. And he today provided me with some numbers that he thinks are there based on the floating exemption we have. He felt like there was some error in the inflationary growth number. He thought the inflationary growth was about 25 new and instead of 52. And if we use those numbers, the rollback rate would be 8.298 for the county except for Carrollton and 6.856 for the city of Carrollton, and we generate $21,328,110, which is 5,300 more than what we have in our budget. But I will tell you, the Tax Commissioner has some concern about the revenue. She feels like the Tax Assessor's Office or the consolidated sheets we used were generated on July 11, and she feels like the sheets that Greg used, the time indifference, that everything, we would maybe get new consolidated sheets. So that we're ready right now discussing the process.
Any questions?
So we're voting on this this evening. Do you have a recommendation of which?
I'm gonna, my recommendation is to go with the numbers Lehman has presented, and that's the new numbers.
Okay.
Because from what I've seen, unless I'm wrong, those that have advertised has to fall within a 3% variance. As long as we, they've met that, then they fall within, within their guidelines. Is that correct, Lehman?
Yeah, the state has a 3%, so the advertisement is within 3%. They don't have to re-advertise. Again, Vicky's concern is the difference between the days of July 11 and August 2, which I don't believe will count for $25 million each.
Right, okay.
Any questions? Seeing none. Vicky, we'll give you a second. We are ready to move on, item seven, into the financial session to, to discuss the meeting. But we had Convenience Centers down, it's number three, and Charles Pope's here. If you've got any questions on that, I want any discussion.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I had a flat time. Came out of my park and got me out of work. Let's try and stay clean. Came out of work and had a flat time. The, when I pulled out of the Convenience Center the other day, the car that was, had emptied everything prior to me, in front of me, was from Fulton County. So I know that this was at Dyer Road. So I know you can't watch, there's no way to watch the, the counties on the tags. But I also know that I feel like there would be some kind of something that maybe we could do to make sure that whoever went in there was supposed to be there. I know we've talked about this before, but even if it's a, a tag or whatever, I don't know, but, because, you know, when, yeah, decal or something. Because when you're up in the little house, he's watching, but he can't see the tags.
Right.
So after, I was so shocked that it was Fulton County, and maybe they live here now, I don't know. But that was just something I thought maybe we needed to make sure.
I think the Chairman and Mr. Powers was looking at some things last year, I think it was, and never determined which would be the best way to go, to identify the people in the county.
We did, and we've talked to those that are mentioning they're supposed to, but like you say, Dyer, Noonan, there's so many cars in and out of there, obviously you're not going to catch them. I see different ones in and out of there. Lehman ran the numbers as far as if you're trying to charge it for a service, but even if you just did a placard or something that would identify going in there, even if you gave those out at the same time you're doing your tags, it may be worth, those are not going to cost the county a lot to produce.
Right.
And maybe it's just putting something in a car that they could identify, you know? We can discuss.
But you know, a lot of people has company trucks.
That's what I'm talking about, a placard would actually hang from your, you know, like West Georgia gives you when you come out here as a visitor on campus or whatever, something in that line. That's something, Charles, if you still want to discuss with him out there and see if they could keep up with that any better, or if their recommendation is anything better.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll get with Patrick. I got a thing here where we've done a survey. January, February 2015, it tells you how many vehicles that actually come through. Of course, you see the Dyer Road there is the busiest center of all. It's enough for everybody.
Oh.
And I think maybe Ms. Mayberry and us can get together, and we got some college students last time to do that.
Yes.
And, and maybe do it again for a couple of months and see where our numbers is now, since we have closed one center and, and changed the operating hours on the others.
Hey, Charles, this might be a crazy idea, but the houses or the little offices that they're in, and it may cost a lot of money to move them, but I wonder if they were moved more to the entrance rather than, some of them are kind of like in the middle. Now, by moving them forward might help with the tags, but then it might take the eyes off the other, so I don't know if that's, but when you talk to Patrick, what you see, if maybe that's a good idea, a bad idea, or it might be too expensive to do.
Yeah, but they're all anchored down, the water's stubbed up, the sewer's stubbed up.
Okay, I take, I take that off the table. It was an idea. I'm over.
Or a camera. There might could be a camera, and he could watch the camera while he's sitting there, and the camera could be sit there and it'd be going, ah-ha, you know? That might be pretty easy to do. But the other thing is, is there any way when he needs signs made, that maybe we'd have a process where he's not having to handwrite out a sign and, you know?
Yeah, we make, if they want signs, all they have to do is call, and we'll make whatever they want.
Well, I know, but sometimes they don't really, maybe if somebody would tell them that, that might help a little bit.
So we need, we'll, we'll secondary check ours and see if there's any signage that needs update.
Right.
And, I mean, and he's doing, I mean, it was, everything was good, you know, good job, and he was trying to direct people on, you know, where to put the recyclables and that kind of things, and the right number twos and whatever.
Dyer Road is really busy.
Yeah, oh, I know.
Yeah.
And, and it's been really, it was really hot when I was there too, but there's a lot of people dumping, dumping a lot of things, and so I know we have to pay to have that took, you know, taken off, so anyway.
Also, hopefully, we're going to try to pave that section from the road up to where you dump at, because big trucks don't get on that part, and we believe it'll hold up. So hopefully this summer, before winter, we'll try to get it paved.
If it doesn't wash away before that, it just keeps washing out, you know? But anyway, but cameras, you know, some, a camera might be a real solution to that. But anyway, there's a lot of, a lot of people go there, so thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Charles. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number seven. That's the review and discussion of items for the August 2nd Board of Commissioners meeting. We'll go to that agenda, start with item number eight under Financial Session. Lehman will give us an update on financial. He'll do a recap this evening. Is there any questions or anything for Lehman right now?
No.
All righty, we'll go to item 8.2, Resolution for TSPLOs, Call for the Election. That is, we'll call me Stacy Blackman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is a resolution to call for the election for the 1% TSPLOs, the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales and Use Tax. And it would call for the election to be, go on the November 6 ballot to be considered by the voters, and it, this tax, if approved, would generate approximately $82,500,000 over the five-year term. And this resolution also authorizes the election office to take all necessary action to, to call the election. And we have the purposes that were approved as part of that intergovernmental agreement that you approved last month, and it's been signed by all the cities. That's Exhibit A. Do you have any questions?
This is just to call, call for the referendum on November's ballot?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Next, we'll move to item 8.3. We'll call on Brian Kent, County Engineer, to discuss the Agriculture Conservation
Chairman, Commissioners, before you tonight is going to be three applications to forward to the NRCS, federal agency for applications. To bring you up to speed, some years ago, 2003, 2004, Carroll County became effectively a land trust. And since that date, we currently have nine agricultural farms, redundancy, nine farms in the program. We are spending, preserving agriculturally about 1,700 acres right now. So there's about three more farms coming before you tonight. They've been ranked, embedded, have already gone through the planning and zoning, how we do it, and with your approval, we will move forward with that to the application to the state agency, NRCS, to forward on to federal, the federal program. Our, our program will be ranked, our, our applications will be ranked, they will be ranked by the state, and then they get submitted to the federal agency, to, to Washington D.C. Monies will be sent back, divvied out to the state, and then per ranking, we will get our divvy, and we will be able to close on whatever amount of money, whatever number farms we can close on.
Brian, go ahead, Vicky.
No, I just wondered, do we have the money that we need to match?
Yes, we put back $3 million, and we only had two, we had, these three were on the original application process.
Two of them were.
Two out of these three were on the original process last time that did not get chosen. So we didn't have, only had one new application. So we have not, we have not spent, spent half of the money we put.
Yeah, right now, the county, with these applications, the county will spend $339,000 and effectively be protecting 347 acres with all these applications to date, because we spend the money and then we get reimbursed through the federal government. So we spend our SPOs money, but we'll get reimbursed the federal amount. To date, we've spent, Carroll County has spent $1.6 million and protected 1,725 acres.
So we only had two farms last time get approved.
Two, yes.
Yeah. Any questions for Brian?
I do have one other quick question. Out of these, same round, these applications, we had, one of the applicants is requesting to put up a sign and, sign similar to yours. And my question before you is, are we okay with putting the Carroll County symbol on that sign? It's going to be, it's essentially going through the, the sign ordinance and whatnot, having a discussion about that. It is a government sign. NRCS is going to be funding it through their line items for the landowners. There's already language. I've got a, kind of what you might look at is Mr. Levin's farm up in Center Point. He's going to put the Centennial symbol on there, Centennial Farm, if it gets approved. The question before you is, are we okay with putting our, essentially our county seal symbol at the bottom? I don't know if that's a...
I was going to say, I'll refer to the County Attorney, just make sure. I don't think that'd be, but I, I think you'd want to...
I don't know if we've ever watched these programs.
Yeah.
We've, we've been on some of the previous signs, so I don't, I'm just asking if it's okay.
Yeah, if we've done it before, there probably should not be, but I want them to review it just to make sure. I don't see a problem.
Is that for, put a sign on land that's been approved for conservation?
He's been accepted into the program. He, Mr. Levin's also has a Centennial Farm. He's got a brass plaque for being a Centennial Farm. He's going to put that, probably his house. This sign will be a three-by-three foot sign, and it will be probably on the fence. It won't be in the right of way, it'll be on his personal, private property, but it'll be right there, you know, visible, so.
Do you have a sign, George?
I think it's a compliment to us.
Absolutely, yeah. So the Board has no problem, given it, we're clear.
Now, like I said, we are kind of in the lead. The NRCS just had a meeting here in the old commission chambers this week, and the lady, Sharon Swanger, was here. She is the person who, through our state contact, the state easement specialist, and still, we are the forerunner of this program, pretty much by the county. Our only, only peer is Oconee County, and out of all the applications, out of all, all the acreage, and there's about 3,000 acres preserved under this program, and we're half of it, so, a little over half of it, actually. So we're doing, we're doing good things here. Everybody speaks well of our efforts to preserve agricultural land, so.
Any other questions for Brian? Brian, thank you very much. Next item is item 8.4. We'll call on Gerald Pilgrim for Sheriff's Office Roof.
Commissioners, I hope you're all well. I've got before you all, the Sheriff's Department, and actually the actual Sheriff's Office is actually taking on water pretty significantly. And so the Sheriff's Office has gotten a quote, and this is just a quote they have for the repair that they have. It's going to be, it's on the older section of the thing. It's fairly complex. There's multiple roof systems kind of around there. And this is a quote to tie in the two roofs that are, one's over the evidence room, one's over the, I guess, administrative wing of the Sheriff's Office. It'll be tying it in. The Sheriff's Office got a quote from West Georgia Roofing. West Georgia Roofing is actually offering a five-year contractor's warranty, but for an additional $1,400, and the total price on the project was $54,090, but for an additional $1,400, they're able to get a contract, I'm sorry, a manufacturer's warranty on the roof system. So if that's something y'all would like to pursue, this is coming as a request from the sheriff. Are funds available still in the 2008 SPOs where we did some stuff on the video systems? Their video systems came in even under what y'all had approved, so there's still money available in that, that line item, if y'all choose to do that.
Any questions? Thank you, Gerald. We'll move into item number nine under Business Session, 9-1, Resolution Regarding Opioid Crisis. Going to call on, absolutely, to introduce, I wasn't sure. Okay, that's fine, Gerald, go ahead.
And we'll get you to the resolution in a second, I think. Mr. Tyson is going to be here, but I just got a little stuff that I had to hand out for y'all a moment ago. Just kind of want to go through that with you, kind of leading up to what this discussion is about. These are just like random notes that I have, and you see the first one that we have is the June edition of the Parks and Rec Magazine. It's a national publication, and on that is about opioids. Back last December, the president flew in, a lot of county commissioners, and one of the number, the number-one topic was on the opioid epidemic. Well, it gets into Carroll County, and we all know it's affected, and just, but I guess it was the, the numbers are staggering when you look at it. Page number two is the dark pictures you see. The dark counties that are highlighted are the counties that have the highest prescribing rate. And these are actually, these are not illegal drugs, these are prescribing rates in the, in the state, and there's also there. This is CDC records. Carroll County, out of every 100 people in Carroll County, there are 116 active opioid prescriptions. It just, it's mind-boggling on that. So just want to kind of show you that while we're coming in, and while Richards will be having his presentation in a moment, again, these are the sheets that give all the counties, we're one of the leading, we're in the... in the top 20% in the county on prescribing rates. So this is just the actual numbers for every county. And then we get to Department of Public Health, that's page number eight. This was out of their surveillance thing. In Carroll County, right now, Carroll County ranks number seven in the mortality rate in the state on opioid overdoses. That, that's bad in and of itself, with all the counties that we have, the large counties that are there. But when you look at it a little bit deeper, on page number 10, these are the states in the, about overdose. On the rates per 100,000 people, Carroll County has got the highest. We actually are number one in the state with the highest death rate from opioid overdoses. It's, it's affecting us pretty dramatically on what our EMS, our EMS costs, the fire of this personnel that has to, that responds to them, the Sheriff's Office where we have them incarcerated and treatment. It's also affecting us, we're spending, the board has approved with the true drug court, almost $300,000 a year, which are, a lot of those are from opioids. We also have treatment in juvenile court of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we're actually seeing, that we're spending, and the kids are on those. So all told, there's million-plus dollars a year that is directly affecting our budget from opioids. How, how are we going to address it? And I guess this is what we're wanting to do, that Richard will get into a little bit of discussion on what other counties, I think y'all may have saw where Villa Rica is being involved in some of the litigation. So again, these are just staggering numbers, we just wanted to kind of show you that we're, these are the ranks that we do not want to be number one in, and want to do what we can to stop that.
Gerald, do you know if our Sheriff's Department carries Narcan?
They, they do not, but we are looking at finding some grants for those. There are a few that do, but we want to make sure that we can try to get it in all those and in all of our first responders.
I know that, I know that the, the Amelies has it, but I mean, not one drug.
Our Fire Department does not, which our Fire Department is usually one of the first on the scenes on overdoses.
Well, we really need to look, because that is a life-saving drug.
It is, and we are looking at trying to do some grants for that, and we're also trying to look at doing some stuff through our date, through our drug and alcohol treatment, and we're trying to see how much money it would cost, so try to do that to make sure we are able to get it in all of our first responders' vehicles.
Because I was talking to some other commissioners in some other counties, and I think their Sheriff's has it in, and they're on every fire truck, and I think we need to look into that, especially if we're number one.
Of course.
Yes, and, you know, and with the coroner, you know, that's one of those things where he just recently, y'all approved the purchase, you know, in his budget of a pill counter, and that was to keep from handling all the opioids that he has, the fentanyl, which the deputies in the courthouse now wear gloves when they're screening just because of fentanyl, and the potential fentanyl overdose, just by touching someone with it.
You know, Marty and I were at a mental health summit yesterday, and that was one of the things they talked about, was that you don't know what's being mixed in these drugs, so even our first responders can get sick from breathing what's on them. And also, we learned that the Narcan, sometimes it takes, what, two, three Narcan per person?
Judge...
And I thought that somebody had a grant yesterday, was, and that was at, that was at mapping thing, we want to talk to Terry Langley about, it's free.
Judge Blackman, who is over the Mental Health Court, every one of his clients is directly affected with this, and it's through either self-treatment or being prescribed. So it's got, even outside of our drug treatment programs, it's in our mental health program.
But July 1st, the law took effect that a doctor cannot prescribe an opioid unless they check for the, the listing, if they're on the list, if they've been prescribed anything. So we're seeing the prescribing of opioids go down dramatically from the hospital standpoint, but it's still out there.
I'm going to turn it over to Richard.
I'm Richard Tyson, I'm Stacy's partner, and just want to talk to you quickly about the recommendation of a law firm, or law firms, to handle a possible lawsuit. And so the law firms that we've recommended, several were interviewed, and there are two. There's the Brinson Askew Firm, which is in Rome, and the McCamey Phillips Firm, which is in Dalton, Georgia. And these firms both have significant experience in filing lawsuits that are part of what's called a multi-district litigation. It's kind of like a class action, but it's a little bit different, it's kind of a hybrid. What would happen is, is they would file a lawsuit on our behalf, and it would be in federal court in Newnan. That's then going to get consolidated with a national group of, of suits in Ohio that are currently undergoing. And the common issues of liability, those sorts of things would be litigated up there. Then the specifics in terms of specific damages, if there was a trial, it would be then remanded back to Newnan, and there would be a trial there. The vast, vast majority of the time, 95, 98% of the time, they're going to get resolved in some sort of settlement, but that's how it would go. And so these two firms would be representing the county and filing this individual lawsuit on the county's behalf. Again, they have extensive experience, they've been involved in several multi-district litigation. They're good firms, they, both, the Brinson Askew Firm has represented the city of Rome for years and years and years, and the McCamey Phillips Firm has represented the county, Woodville County, for a number of years. So they know, you know, what it's taking, they're not this kind of typical plaintiff's firm or whatever, they, they know what it's like to deal with, you know, city and county governments. Our firm would assist them as needed in terms of things. There, there are going to be some issues coming up in terms of us gathering information that's necessary to be able to, you know, Gerald talked about the damages, and, you know, the specifics for us in terms of, you know, we spent this on drug court, our, you know, law enforcement has spent this much, the, the court system has spent this much of getting those, those specific statistics, which are going to be necessary to maximize our potential recovery, because those numbers really are kind of stunning. When I first saw them, I, I never would have guessed that Carroll County was that high in those areas. And so do you think it's important to have a seat at the table to make sure, you know, we get the, the money that Carroll County deserves to, to look at this? And a lot of the, it looks like a lot of the damages are going to be forward-looking, treatment programs, you know, different funds for, for, for treatment, those sorts of things. And so that's certainly something that we want to address, that not just looking at what's happened in the past, but looking at the future. The, the fee agreement that has been proposed, that they have agreed to, is, is that, again, it's like a kind of contingency fee of plaintiff's case, they only get paid, we only get paid, if they win. If lose, then nothing to the county. And if they win, it's 25%, typically in contingency fees, it's 40%, 33%. So that's a good, a good number. And that's our recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
I do.
Yes.
What, what kind of lawsuits are you talking about? Are you talking about that Carroll County would file a lawsuit?
Correct. It would be a lawsuit filed by Carroll County against the manufacturers and the distributors, that are several, there, you know, it's probably...
Right.
10 or 15. And there's kind of two theories. There's one, as far as the manufacturers go, they marketed this drug, and came up with this drug, the opioids, and amazingly said that it was not addictive. And you kind of remember, you know, back in the kind of late 80s, 90s, there was this push about, we got to treat pain, and hey, no problem, you know, because before, these were really reserved for, for terminal cancer patients. And so they massively marketed this, and so that's one issue. And then on the distributors, they had a duty under federal law, if there are certain spikes or abnormal prescription rates, that there's regulations that they're supposed to report that, and there's thousands and thousands of times when that was not done. So those are kind of the general legal issues, and the, and the theory is, is that it created a public nuisance, which would entitle us to, to, to recover for those, those costs.
So how do we know when we get to that point?
Well, you know, if this is approved, then, you know, within a few weeks, they would file a suit on our behalf, it would get consolidated with the, you know, hundreds and thousands of suits that are in Columbus, Ohio. And, you know, that process at that point in time, you know, a lot of people think there's a lot of pressure to, by the ju, and there is, the judge is putting a lot of pressure to try to get some sort of settlement. You know, it could happen in a year, I mean, it could be three years, it could be five years. I mean, nobody knows for sure, but, but likely, within a few years, there'll be some sort of resolution.
Vicky, ACCG stance was they wouldn't supply one attorney group for the entire state to use. And you might want to discuss why not a class action versus why we chose this right, right here. What I told them, from the standpoint of supporting us, is we didn't want to be first out of the gate, but we didn't want to be left behind. And I guess we're probably about, now that the state and people are getting on board, we're probably about middle of the pack, and I thought that was fair. And nothing's going to happen if it does not move forward, but at least we're making preparations to move forward if, if it does happen.
That, that's exactly right. More than 60, either city or counties have filed suit thus far, and it's looking like probably at least 20 more will. There are certain counties and certain municipalities that have taken the attitude, well, you know, there is, has been a class action filed, and we'll just wait, and if, you know, we're part of that class, then we can collect. Based on our research and talking with the various firms, is that the way this litigation's going, these are very likely to be settled on an individual basis, individual lawsuits. And they're going to be settled based on individual factors for each county, each city. And if you're just part of the class action, you're going to be the last one to that pocket of money, and they're just going to say, oh, this is what you get. Whereas if, if we have a seat at the table by having an individual lawsuit, then we've got an opportunity to, you know, actively try to maximize our damages and to accurately, you know, have evidence of what it is. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be based on prescription rates, it's going to be based on, you know, what we can document that we spent. And, and if you haven't done that, you're going to get a lot less.
Well, who's going to do the research as far as, you know, what impact, I mean, there's numbers for Carroll County, but it's like, okay, then you've got jail, I mean, you've got to go through all the, you know, expected expenditures of, of that, where is all that information coming from?
Excellent question. And that, and that is what, you know, there is no free lunch. I mean, it is going to take some time. I mean, we certainly can do that with existing resources, but it's going to take some time for somebody to gather that information, and it's going to have to be the county that gathers that. So, I mean, you're right, that's, that's going to take some time and some effort.
So the county gathering that, okay, so let's get back to that, then. Who would be capable in the county, or, or the county gathering that information?
Well, we've talked about that, and I think with the, you know, the existing department heads, and, and you're probably got, you know, between the court system and the sheriff, that's going to be the, the vast majority. You know, there are some things, as to health costs, just for employees, to extent with opioid abuse, I mean, unfortunately, it affects, you know, everybody in our society, that's, that's a lesser number, but that, that's going to be, those are going to be the three main areas that you're probably going to look at, having to, to dig in and get some numbers. I mean, they're going to be, you know, standardized, they've got checklist, and we've already looked at those things, that this is what you want to look at, but, but it's going to be probably those three areas that you're going to have to do some, a little bit of digging.
And it also seems like it's larger than that, too, from a standpoint of who's ordering what. I mean, you know, if you're investigating, you're going to fight, going to present a case of, you know, you can say how many people we have in jail, and how much it's cost, and the damages, and the medical expenses or whatever, but how, why, what makes Carroll County have more than anybody else? I mean, are we prescribe, we're prescribing more than anybody else? Why? You know? And that's got to be, and the department heads can't do that.
No, and at, at the end of the day, the question is going to be more of, you know, just what the rates are. And so you're, you're right, I mean, that's an important question, but in terms of figuring the damages, you know, that's already, I mean, liability is going to be established, we're not going to have to prove that, it's just going to be a question of, for whatever reason, Carroll County has a high number of prescribing rates for opioids. You know, it's probably a function of just multiple factors, you know, we're a healthcare center, I think there is some evidence that, you know, where you've got healthcare centers in different places, you know, that you're going to do that, and it's a combination of that, and, you know.
Yeah, but look at, but it doesn't really make sense, though, when you think of seeing the picture of Carroll County versus Fulton County, and all the places that you know that you have issues with drugs and whatever, these are supposed to be legal drugs, so if somebody's prescribing them, if we have the highest prescription rates, there's something else out there going on than what our department heads, you know, they're going to see the end result of somebody coming in to the jail or whatever, being transported for an overdose or something like that. But what's the problem for the county? And that's the part that I'm questioning, who would research that, because there's more to it.
Right, and I, I guess what I'm saying, from, from a lawsuit proof status, we don't have to do that.
Okay.
We don't have to prove this is why it's happening.
Okay.
We just have to prove it is.
It is, okay.
And so we can do that. Now, that's a very important question in terms of our community and going forward and, and wanting to fix that problem, but we don't have to prove that to win the lawsuit.
How did we get the data that we, that we were one of the highest prescribing of opioids? Where did the data come from?
That's the CDC data.
CDC and Department of Public Health.
Okay. The reason why, my wife's a pharmacist, and I read it, she, she gets pharmacist, pharmacy journals, and last month, third month before I, I read an article in there, and it was talking about opioids, and it was talking about the illegal opioids, the heroin, all that, and a lot of them gets blamed on the prescription, and there's a lot of people that's got chronic pain that are, that are committing suicide because the doctors are scared to write the prescription. So we, we're going down a slippery slope of telling, telling the doctors what they need, I mean, to get in, I mean, they, they know what's best for their patients, and I understand that, that, that there are some pill mills and doctors that writes that, but it's a slippery slope when you start telling a doctor how he needs to treat his patient.
And, and let me be clear, this lawsuit in no way involves pharmacists, doctors, medical providers. The only defendants would be the manufacturers of the opioid medications and the distributors, the, I mean, it makes it sound like the drug distrib, I mean, it's the, it's the, you know, these large companies that are in the business of, it's kind of like the alcohol system, it's a three-tiered system, and they got these middlemen that then, hey, okay, we'll just, we'll get you the...
There are drug reps that go in and try to get them to push their drugs, but I understand, I understand the problem, but I also understand there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a big problem with heroin, illegal opioids, that, and that's the reason I want to know the data, I mean, because over in Mexico, they're producing the ones that looks just like the ones that we produce legally, and if they're confiscating them through the sheriff's office, I mean, are they legal or are they illegal?
The CDC's, the, the one, the Department of Health, on our death rate are from legal prescriptions. This is not heroin. We exclude the heroin in those numbers on those sheets that you have. Heroin is taken out of those. These are people that actually have prescriptions in hand that are OD. And yes, I mean, we have, I mean, you know, you don't want to tell, we're not trying to tell doctors what to do, but we've got to address how it's affecting our budget. I mean, we are, we're getting hit. Judge Simpson has, you know, gone through this with us, is chief judge, and that's one of the things, that he does want to compile some stuff to address, and I want to address Sanderson's thing, is, yes, there is a problem with areas. Why is Coweta, why is Douglas County there? Go to Harlson County, it's 198 prescriptions per 100 people. What is affecting this area? It's a regional problem, we've got to get to a root cause, but we also have to address what is the actual cost that we are, we are, as citizens, as taxpayers, we're having to pay for, like Richard said, he said, one of the things is, one of the things that really is glaring was the prescriptions that they're supposed to, the distributors are supposed to let you know if there's a big spike, if it's over a 15% increase in monthly distribution of opioid delivery to a place. There were places that there were 7,000 times the normal prescription rate being delivered to a pharmacy for a month. And the distributor said, well, we're not really going to tell, we don't need to tell the Drug Enforcement Agency about that, because they don't have the manpower to investigate it anyway. They've got the documents, and they have the memos stating to those facts. These aren't, you know, the pill mills, and those are types of things, the small, the small things, those have to be addressed, hopefully the police can address that, hopefully there'll be a change in culture that addresses it. But these were institutions, kind of like the tobacco industry, that went out and knew, they had one doctor to say they weren't, that they weren't addictive. So they used it in all their publications and say opioids aren't addictive. I mean, these aren't telling doctors what to do, but these are telling that, like the drug and, like the tobacco industry, that did the wrong thing, and they can't do that, then us pay for it. Again, us as taxpayers paid for that. And it's just trying to hopefully address that.
Yeah, I mean, my job, I'm a defense lawyer. I defend lawsuits. I, I'm not a plaintiff's lawyer, and, and so this is not, this is not something that I relish, or will get up to you, and, and vast majority of the time, I'd tell you, no, but, you know, based on a lot of what Gerald's told you, it's very limited, it's very specific to a set of specific actions by a very few players. This is not an, an attack on the medical industry, attack on medical providers. If anything, they, you know, have been having to deal with the, the after-effects of this, I mean, I can only imagine, you know, pharmacist to wife, and everybody has medical providers that you know of, that what they're dealing with, I mean, it's, it's, and the, and the whole community.
Well, I hope we're not just going after, after capturing money, I hope we're going after helping have a resolution or help solve the problem, you know, that's the only thing. the only thing I guess.
Get the money to be able to do, to be able to provide the Narcan, to be able to find all the assets that we need to address.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here last week or whatever.
And that's what Judge Simpson wants to follow up on as well, yes.
I mean, it could be an aid to the drug court, I mean, the thinking is, is that this judge, that's head of the multi-district litigation in Ohio, he's very interested in exactly what you are, um, of, of helping people in the future and setting up systems, and there may be funding for a treatment center, uh, the Narcan, all those sorts of things, this is, this is helping our county going forward.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thanks.
Any other questions? That was nine point one, nine point two, nine point one is the resolution, and nine point two is the retention agreement. You need to discuss it, Stacy? They're in conjunction with each other.
The resolution is, um, just reciting the statistics that Gerald and Richard set forth, both nationwide and in our county, and declaring that this is an epidemic, and that it's a public nuisance in our county, and that we can, you are authorizing, pursuing legal action against the manufacturers, distributors, and others as necessary, to the fullest extent available by the law. And that's the resolution, and then the second document is that retention agreement, so that's the, the, um, agreement authorizing the law firms to file this lawsuit that was discussed.
Any questions for Stacy?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Um, item nine point three is the Carroll County Comprehensive Plan, Janet has already been over that, that she'll just be presenting tonight for a vote under item nine three. Any other questions for her? If not, all we have left is this on this session, anything else, if not, we stand adjourned? Anyone? Thank you.